At 7:00 PM, please note all school committee meetings are recorded and can be found on the BRASD YouTube channel. Welcome to the April 16th, 2025 School Committee Meeting. This evening, we have Mrs. King, Mr. Loesch, Ms. Conrad LaBarrento, Ms. Martelli, myself, Jessica Davenport of the School Committee. We also have Mr. Powers and his administration in attendance this evening. Mr. Fitzgibbons, Mr. Dean Marino, and Ms. Melville were unable to attend. We do want to give a special thank you to Mr. Shantz for live streaming and recording. Please stand for the Pledgeable Edges.
Pledgeable Edges to the flag of the United States of America and the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. So now we have public comment for 12 minutes. I will now open the public comment for the 12-minute speakers. Most key comments to no more than that. Do we have anyone here for public comment?
Hello. David Patrick, Vice President of BRASD. So the BRASD would like to address the item on the new business consideration of a letter from the Town of Rainham. I'm not sure if the letter will be read in open session, but in reading through the letter, the selectmen from Rainham are requesting that the School Committee votes on a part of the budget process that's extremely important, which is that if everything doesn't work out, you have the option to have a joint town meeting to try and pass a budget before it goes to the state. Now, they're asking you to forego that, all right? The rights of the town voters to be able to take care of this problem. It's an important part of the process, and they're asking you to say you won't do it. So we highly recommend that you reject the letter from the Town of Rainham.
Ashley Mallard, 270 Grange, I am also coming up here to second this very deceptive request, in my opinion, because if I had, if I had been advocating for the right of citizens to vote, I think it is wrong for Rainham to suggest taking away a right you have to ask. I think it needs to be clarified that if there was a group town meeting, that this doesn't mean you have to ask for the $10 million total. I know that Ms. King's original ask on Budget B, Mr. Powers, the second, was that Rainham and Bridgewater could give free cash. This is an emergency situation. We're about to tap into Arsmore. And Rainham and Bridgewater could cut from their own services. But the presentation based off of this letter is an all-or-nothing ask that they're asking you to sign away on. I don't feel comfortable with that, and I don't feel comfortable with the efforts that we are making to be undermined as a group by you, for you. Additionally, I think it needs to be said that Mr. Powers informed us today that there are 76 non-professional status teachers who are going to be receiving slips. I'm sure Mr. Powers is going to get into this, but I'm the one that's receiving the phone calls and the texts as well as I know you are, but not the same one, right? Because it's just different. And then also professional status staff will be cut into it, and then the high school is going to take a huge hit. If I just did quickly math, based on some of the numbers you threw out, I will just on my own be teaching almost 200 students. Last year, I had about 100. So in a year and a half, my caseload will double. I said to my kids, and I just want this to hit home on you, tomorrow I'm giving a quiz, and I said to my students, we're going to try something different, and we're going to do it on Google Forms tomorrow, and they groaned. And I said, no, it's terrible taking a quiz on Google Forms. It's terrible using the computers. I haven't had a textbook for my class in five years. I make my own workbooks that I single-handedly typed up, which I honestly acknowledge there are typos in, and I reward kids if they find them for me. But I haven't had a textbook in five years. We ran out of the digital and COVID, and I just shot from the hip. I tried to do the best I could, and now I'm going to have double the caseload because we want to preserve the learning for young kids. What's going to happen to the seniors when they go to apply and they have a whole, what classes are left for the seniors to take? What do kids have to write to be well-rounded students for their junior year when they go to apply? Every single kid's going to be writing about how their two towns left them behind, as they're at least still going to have an interesting paper to read in Mr. Voice's class over there, or you're going to read the same thing over and over again. Three years ago, it was COVID. Now it's the towns are going to leave the kids behind? And I honestly expressed to my kids, I'm going to try my best tomorrow with this new strategy because it's the only way I can give you instant feedback. It's the only way I can land next year on my feet, allowing a child to move forward, is using technology to the best, even though I know in my heart it's not the best teaching strategy for ninth graders. So I urge you to not give up the right to vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trishelle Riley, member of the Rainham Board of Selectmen, and I would just request that Chairperson need that the letter from the Board of Selectmen be read into the record in its entirety. I think it's being misstated at this point, and I just want to emphasize that when the board voted out, we emphasize our board supports our schools, we want what's best for our students. The request to the Board of School Committee is just that this decision should be made by the voters at the ballot box. And it's basically just to ask you that you support whatever the voters decide when it does go to an override ballot vote. That's where the decision should be made, not at a joint town meeting, which may not reflect what the voters actually, it could possibly undermine the vote of the voters. So that's why our request, again, not that we don't support the students, we just feel that would be an unfair decision that could possibly happen at a joint town meeting. And I also want to mention, just so that this, it's very clear to it, at our board this week, last night actually, we also mentioned that we wanted to give a shout-out to our teachers, our administrators, and our support staff, because even though I know this year you're operating, you know, with less finances, you're in short 24 positions, you have higher class sizes, but great things are still happening in our schools. I don't want that to be lost, and that's because of the great job our teachers and support staff and administrators do. So thank you all for that and appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, so we'll move on to correspondence and recognition. So the School Committee has received multiple emails about the fiscal year '26 budget, and one in particular from the Town of Rainham that we just discussed, and we'll discuss that more on the new business. Fair well to School Committee members Lou, Dean Marino, and Kathy Martelli. Unfortunately, Mr. Dean Marino could not be here for his last meeting, but we would like to thank him for his commitment to the students and the families of Bridgewater Rainham. Lou served as our Secretary Clerk, Chair of the Policy Subcommittee, and the Transportation Subcommittee. Mrs. Martelli, we would like to extend our appreciation of all you have done for our community and your role on the School Committee, serving a year as Secretary Clerk, Public Relations Liaison, a member of the Transportation, Budget, and Negotiations Subcommittee, and I'm sure there are more I've missed.
(Applause). No, it's been a pleasure. The three years I was honored to serve. Shut sweet.
Thank you, Ms. Martelli. All right, so we're going to move on to the recognition of Jeff Bowler. So cable access TV is community access TV. Bridgewater and Rainham have been very fortunate to have such great partners in community TV over the years. Tonight, we want to recognize one such partner. We think partner, but truly Jeff Bowler is more than a mere partner. He's our go-to person for all broadcast issues. He's the guy freezing his butt off broadcasting every football game. Mr. Fitzgibbons with this.[653.16][653.16](Laughter). He has worked closely with the High School AV Club, helping to nurture the next generation of broadcasting partners for our communities. It is a great honor and with great respect that tonight we recognize Mr. Bowler for his outstanding dedication to Bridgewater Rainham and present him with these tokens of our scene.
I just want to say thank you to the committee. It's really a two-way street for sure. We benefit greatly from our partnership with Bridgewater Rainham. I know Rainham as well, and it's not many communities in the Commonwealth where you really have this kind of partnership. And I know you mentioned the Media Club. We're very excited about that to continue to grow and really give a chance to highlight the many positive events that are happening here every day and try to get that out to the committee more. So thank you so much for this, and we look forward to a strong future.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yes, of course. Thank you, Ms. Davenport. Yes, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Ms. Martelli and obviously Mr. Dean Marino who was not here. I've had the pleasure of working with Kathy my full time here in the district, all 10 years, as she worked in Central Office before moving on to retirement and then to School Committee. And she really is a true partner and a true champion for our school, so I did want to just publicly acknowledge her and thank her for everything. Along those lines, obviously thanking Lou as well for all his support over the years that he's served on the committee. I know obviously everybody who serves up here, for the most part, is truly invested in the communities, and so I appreciate all of you. I also want to recognize Mr. Bowler. You know, there is very few people that you can have on speed dial 24/7, and Jeff is always one of those people. We certainly call on him for small events, for large events, as much as Ms. Watson and her staff organize graduation. It really is Jeff and his team putting that together and making sure funds are out of pitch. There are so many other things that we call on Jeff. You know, certainly if we run into an issue that Mr. Shantz can't solve, or we're working with an outside vendor that we just want to get a second opinion on, and quite frankly, even the weather on snow days, I've reached out to Jeff in the past because he's a closet meteorologist, and so I say, what do you think about tomorrow? So truly, again, thank you for your commitment to the district. It really is appreciated. I did want to just share a couple of things. Obviously, you know, not that I'm telling you anything you don't know, but our district is full of amazing students and staff. The last week has certainly been a busy one for our students and faculty, and so just I wanted to highlight a couple of things that have happened across the district. Excuse me, across the district. As you know, we have started a unified track and field team. They held their first home meet last week. It was very well-attended. Many of our administrative staff attended. It was against Durkey High School. Their unified track and field team where our students competed in several throwing events, they do the shot put, javelin, they competed in the long jump, as well as several sprinting events. They have already gone on the road for a meet. They have another home meet, I believe, actually this afternoon. I haven't found out the results of that, but I know they had one this afternoon. So it really has been great to see that get up and running. I want to thank Ms. Amanda Doherty, the art teacher at the Mitchell. She held an art show this past weekend at the Bridgewater Public Library for some of the students at the Mitchell. Three of our special education classrooms there are displayed at the library, and it'll actually be up there all month. So I encourage you, it's on the second floor, if you have a chance to get over there. It's great to see you, and I want to thank Doherty for doing that. As you know, or you may or may not know, our robotics team, TJ Squared, has left for Houston. They are competing in the world championship. TJ Squared, you know, year in, year out, has great seasons, but this is another special one for them. So they left, Ms. King, 3:00 AM this morning, I believe.
Yes, very early today.
So if they haven't arrived already, it'll be this soon, but we're excited to learn how they did down there. And then I do want to recognize two of our students, one being one of our student advisors, Celine George Akopoulos and Rachel Corey. They are both heading down to Orlando to compete in the International Decker Competition over April vacation and a few days afterwards. So we're very excited to see how they do. But again, I think this just highlights many of the things that we have going on in our district, but these are just a few I wanted to share. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Powers. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. I would like to entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda minus the payroll warrant dated April 3rd. Do I have a motion? Second. Great. Approved. So that covers everything. I apologize. This is one of my first times. So move on to the educational reports. Oh, do I have to roll? I have to roll call. My bad. All in favor?
Thank you.
Any opposed? All right. So educational reports. Next on the agenda is the BR Student Advisory. I will turn the floor over to Mrs. King.
Thank you. I would like to introduce Ms. Corey to the stand. We will have an abbreviated report today as several of our students, Mr. Daly, Ms. King, and Ms. Tijon Cisse have other engagements. This is that time of year where everyone has crazy schedules, but they should all be here for mainly their last meeting.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm excited to share with you the impactful work being done by the Virgin Lives Club at our high school. Just this past week, they participated in Enough Day at the State House. Enough stands for Ending, Make, Contain, and Future. Their presence at this event was valuable as they engaged with legislators and senators to provide updates on the current situation of our school and community. Their perspectives and efforts are instrumental in helping shape and pass legislation that addresses substance abuse concerns at our high school. They had the opportunity of speaking directly with two representatives from our district, informing them of proactive measures being taken to combat the issues of substance abuse. They had informative conversations about the implications of peer pressure invading, especially in legal. The club successfully raised awareness and fostered dialogue that is essential for driving change. Their commitment to advocating for a positive change is commendable. Thank you for your attention, and I hope you all go on to spring season. Like Ms. King said, unfortunately, a lot of the members can't make it, so now we'll mostly.
On Tuesday, April 8th, the Sompas hired a visitor visit. That night, from 6:00 to 8:00, we had three different events happening. Me, along with the rest of the student council, lined up flyers for customers. When they were done with their meals, they would show the flyers real quick, and you'd get 20 per side of their bill, a free charge from the customer. Then we had two raffles. One was a 50/50 raffle, which was won by our president, Brett Wosher's grandmother, and we then had a raffle for many different prizes, including various gift cards and tickets, those of which were won by Sompas. We were very grateful for the raffle prizes won by them, Beret's for helping us out, and the customers that took the town under their gaze to support us. Beret's was one of our best supporters of the I, one of the largest turnouts and sponsors. Thank you, and that concludes our statements for this evening.
Thank you very so much.
Good luck at your competition next week. Thank you.
All right, so we're out to administrative and School Committee reports. A report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Davenport, members of School Committee, members of our audience. I did want to provide you an update on the status of FY '26 budget planning and development. I apologize for being somewhat redundant, as many of you serve on Budget Sub or are heavily involved in the budget development. We are currently working in parallel with two different scenarios. One, with the thought of if an override is put forward by both towns to the voters and it would pass, what that would mean for the district. You have heard us talk about being able to add additional staff. That is obviously the easy path for us to go down, because we can certainly use additional staff, trying to reduce class size, making sure that we're in compliance, and obviously, you know, at the upper level, making sure we're restoring positions that have been filled over years and increasing elective offerings. The more difficult path, obviously, is that of the what-if, the what-if the override doesn't pass. And so we have been spending, you know, a good majority of our time, I want to say our time, Central Office's time, Business Office's time, my team's time, working on those possible scenarios. I did have the opportunity to meet with our faculty and staff today across the district. We held a few virtual meetings where I gave them an update very similar to what I provided you this evening, but I wanted to be able to hear, to have them hear it, great for me. In addition, you know, we would like to start sharing this information with the public now we kind of have a good handle on the potential what-ifs. So as, you know, School Committee is well aware, we have presented at this point three different scenarios. The preliminary budget that was presented in January, the public hearing budget that was presented at the beginning of March, and then obviously our third budget that was presented at the end of March for approximately $106 million and change. I know in speaking with the towns, obviously, it would be very difficult and challenging for them to fund any of our budgets that we put forward without the potential of some type of operational override. So we're well aware of what is needed to be able to pass our budgets. But if not, you know, based on what the towns have communicated to us, that they can handle under their revenue sharing model, what we have received for Chapter 70 funding, and what we are prepared to contribute as a district, it presents a significant shortfall. We're looking at, even if we were to use, say, the Level Services budget that we initially presented at the beginning of March at the public hearing, $102 million and change. With what the towns, the state, and the district has been able to commit, that would approximately translate into a $96 million and change. So you can see where $6.4 million off from a Level Services budget just for us to be able to turn the page. What we've been doing at Central Office is looking to see, okay, if this becomes a reality, which we certainly hope it doesn't, but we obviously know we have to be prepared in the event that it does, how can we close that gap? First and foremost, we obviously want to look at things, additional revenues, additional funding sources, before we start talking about positions. Unfortunately, you know, to close that gap, that is our last step and kind of where we're at. But I know we've talked Budget Sub and even at the full School Committee and with the towns about the potential of using some of our capital funds that would be voted and approved on for capital expenses, diverting some of those or redirecting some of those funds back into the operational budget for the year to help to close that gap, should we have an override that doesn't pass. So that would approximately be about $1.2 million. And again, these are, you know, estimates based on looking at some of the projects that we still need to get done across the district and obviously the funding that we were, you know, in discussion with from the towns. So obviously, you know, that would make a difference and certainly wouldn't close the gap, but it would certainly be a step in the right direction. Obviously, health insurance continues to be a struggle for us. As you know, our anticipated rate increase was raised to 20%. You know, that was somewhat of a blow to all of us and certainly our budget. Thankfully, Ms. Healy and her team have been relentless with our insurance broker and Harvard Pilgrim, our insurer, and have continued to work, and so we don't have a final number. It's still some of them moving target, but Ms. Healy was able to get them a couple weeks ago to initially come down to 19%, although a percent doesn't seem like a lot, it still does trades later into money. But she didn't stop there, continued to schedule meetings for all of us and her individually, and was able to get them down to 17%. Again, of, you know, significant savings, not enough to close the gap, but we're certainly headed in the right direction. We have tried to explore the possibility of joining a municipal purchasing group, and I know we've talked about that. It doesn't seem as though we would be able to make the window for FY '26. We would potentially be able to make the window for FY '27, but we're not going to, you know, stop exploring that option to see if we can get into FY '26. There's potential for some additional relief if we were to examine or reevaluate our dental plans. We currently do not go through Harvard Pilgrim, but Harvard Pilgrim is saying that if we were to switch over to their dental plans, we may have some additional savings on our medical costs. So those are all things that we're exploring that potentially could get us down to 15%. And again, you know, as we go from 20 down to 15, that is, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars we're talking about. So we are exploring all those options, but that is still somewhat of a moving target for us, and so we look at potential savings there. It could be a little bit more, but we're counting on, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars there for savings. I know School Committee and Budget Sub has talked about the possibility of if we need to take any additional funds out of E and D, excess and efficiency, I would certainly recommend that, especially if the override doesn't pass, that would be an option that School Committee would strongly explore. Obviously, I know we've had some initial conversations about a dollar amount, and trying to balance and see what's going to the staff today. We have to try to balance, making sure we do have money in E and D should something unexpected happen, facility-wise, boiler-wise, some unexpected costs much like happens at home. We don't want to have too much money in there because we are facing a $6.4 million shortfall. So we really need to make sure we're balancing that and can really address our needs on both fronts. We obviously, we've had this conversation, and should we need to go in this direction, you know, I think we'll need to, as Budget Sub has already started, to really examine all fees, whether it be, you know, and I know we raised some fees last year, but looking back at, you know, parking fees, extracurricular fees, the cost of preschool, cost of base, again, certainly they're not going to make up a $6.4 million shortfall, but I think we have to make every effort. I know Mr. Chaka came last time to talk about facility rental fees, increasing those and creating new structure. I think obviously the big one that I've spoken to you about, and there's been some discussion, is, you know, athletics and extracurriculars at the middle school and high school level. We obviously, you know, want to make sure our students have every opportunity to have a positive experience where they have opportunities in front of them, but, you know, those are expensive to fund. We currently do have a user fee for athletics, and we also have a user fee for extracurriculars, but I would recommend to you, you know, if and when the time comes, you know, we need to really explore what that's going to look like. Do athletics, you can become self-funded. I think, you know, we're talking about, again, $6.4 million shortfall and large numbers of potential, you know, reductions in force. I think everything has to be on the table, again, trying to balance the opportunities for our kids with how do we generate some additional revenue. So, you know, there is that possibility. We have explored what it would potentially cost per student. This is based on, you know, athletes participating this year certainly can't, you know, project 100% of what would happen for next year, but if we were to self-fund athletics, we would be looking at a user fee of approximately $900 to $1,000 per student per sport. So your three-sport athletes could be anywhere from $2,700 to $3,000. Obviously, that would be, you know, the max. Anything that we were to do underneath that would certainly offset the cost of athletics. So I think those are just things that we really need to look at, especially in the moment, you know, insurance becomes more clear. You know, obviously, we're still involved in negotiations with two of our four unions, and so once again, we have a better picture of what that will look like. We'll really know plus or minus some more concrete numbers. So that could certainly change, but I do think we really have to take a hard look at those fees and how we can become as much self-sufficient as possible or self-funding as possible. Then we obviously start looking at positions, because at this point, you know, we, I should say, we've also asked Mr. Shantz, Mr. Chaka, Ms. Joyce, and Ms. Richards to really reevaluate facilities, IT, teaching, and learning, to see if there's any additional savings. And so we were able to identify by, you know, moving some of our resources that we do have digital access to, to digital only and not having print materials, there is a savings there, and Mr. Shantz is looking at pushing off some of the IT projects, not capital projects, but, you know, software, behind-the-scenes projects that he's hoping to accomplish next year, and Mr. Chaka is doing the same. So again, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars savings there, potentially. So then we do then start taking a look at positions. Obviously, as I shared with the staff today, first and foremost, we have to try to do everything we can to preserve classroom positions, building-based positions, and so that, you know, forces us to start looking at positions that are building-based positions, and so that, you know, forces us to start looking at positions that are non-classroom, non-building-based as much as possible. So looking at administration, because we don't, you know, every, every area of the organization has to be impacted, especially when we're faced with such a shortfall, so looking at administrative positions that potentially may not be filled. Looking at other departments that may be reduced, such as facilities, such as secretary of unions, you know, practice ESPs, really looking at all positions that we potentially can. Obviously, some of those positions we need to be able to run the district, but if there's an opportunity for us to, again, try to preserve classroom positions, we will. We then obviously take a look at our retirees. We currently have 16 retirees as of today. You know, I, we always have a few more that come in towards the end of the year, so that number could change. But looking at those 16 positions and how many of those, you know, we not fill. Obviously, some of them we need because of compliance and, you know, the committee's committed to try to keep class size manageable or at least similar to what it is now. And so looking at some of those positions, you know, we will have to fill some of those. That still presents, you know, a still significant shortfall for us. Again, depending on how these things shake out with insurance and with E and D and with negotiations, we could be still looking at about a $2 million shortfall. We're at that point where unfortunately, we have to stop looking at positions. I did notify staff today that we will be sending out after vacation. And again, I know there was some discussion about the timeline of it, but I felt strongly that I wanted to make sure that we proceeded cautiously, make sure that we were doing everything correctly, because obviously, we're talking about, even though we're talking about positions, there's still a person behind those positions, there's families behind those positions. And so we wanted to make sure we did our due diligence and fact that everything is correct. So that does give us some time for when we return. We will be issuing unfortunately, letters to our non-professional teaching staff. You can hear we do have 76 non-PTS teachers. And obviously, as you know, one of the other, you know, dominoes and unattended consequences is as we potentially have layoffs, we have to make sure that we also have enough budget for unemployment costs. And so looking to make sure that we can cover that, we will be going into our PTS list as well. Now, you know, obviously, the big question is how many of those positions will come back? I think some of the factors that I've already talked to you about that are still unknown will play into that. What I can share with you is obviously, looking at those positions, there are several positions that we just can't afford to do without. Obviously, well aware of our challenges in our world of student services. Many of those positions, many of our non-PTS educators and even some of our PTS educators fall under that student services umbrella. We have to be able to provide special education services, we have to be able to stack our substantially separate programs, we have to be able to provide nursing coverage, school psychologist coverage, school adjustment counselor coverage, guidance counselor coverage. Those are things that, you know, we just have to be able to do to the degree that we can. And so there will be all those numbers, positions that return simply because we have to. But we are going to be looking at, you know, potentially a significant number of positions that are left unfilled. Unfortunately, where those positions fall would be classroom positions. We're trying to obviously, again, make every effort to at least maintain as close as possible class size at the elementary levels what we have now. That does mean that the high school and middle school will, you know, bear the brunt of this, which, again, any level having to deal with this is unfortunate. The other, again, domino that may come of this is as we are unable to fill positions, we will have to potentially move people internally. So we could have staff moving from building to building, level to level, based on certification, just to fill gaps that exist because we weren't able to fill positions. You know, we, when we kind of, you know, sketch out again the potential scenarios of what this may look like, as you can imagine, at the high school, class size would be, depending on the section, depending on the content area, depending on, you know, freshman, sophomore, junior, senior, class sizes, you know, you should expect 30-plus. You should expect even higher. We'll have some classes, we talked to Ms. Watson yesterday, that'll be in the 40s and 50s, and so we'll have to use rooms like this. And obviously, you know, it means a reduction in electives. So again, working through some of these scenarios, we may have students that are in multiple study halls per day. Obviously, that's not something that any of us would recommend. And it's something that I think we really have to consider, depending on how many study halls. And Ms. Watson, which is creating a mock schedule right now, does find that our students, especially our upperclassmen, you know, if they're in three, four, five study halls a day, I can't even imagine that. Doesn't make sense to, you know, have them be here for a whole day. So those are things that, as she's building that schedule, that will become more obvious and evident. I can tell you at the middle school level, again, we're looking at projected class size, minimum 30, all the way up to 36. What I will say to that is this, these numbers are only as good as right now. Obviously, they're based on current enrollment, moving up to next year, so they're projections. What it doesn't factor in, obviously, you've heard us talk about this, make sure there's enrollment data, and I've shared the data with you. We have had 100 students over the last few years, each year move into the district. You add another 100 students to our enrollment for next year, and these numbers are obviously are skewed. So we're looking at anywhere from, you know, 32 to 35, I'm sorry, 31 to 36 at the middle school level. And then when we look at K4, again, you know, especially 2, 3, 4, we're looking at 28s to 30s, not ideal. K1, you know, we have somewhat of a conundrum in that right now, kindergarten enrollment is happening. And so although we have some preliminary numbers, we don't have concrete numbers, as many of our students still enroll over the summer. So we typically use this year's K numbers to project next year's K numbers. So when we do that, moving up into first grade, we would have roughly 26.8 students on the Bridgewater side, almost 27, and 24.5, almost 25 on the Rainham side. Now, when you look at those numbers, you know, and you do the math, if we were to say, well, I'm going to try to take a teacher from Rainham and place them in Bridgewater, or in some cases, not at this particular grade level, do the opposite, it just flips the problem. So if we were to go from, you know, 24 in Rainham, reduce the teacher, we'd be up to, you know, 26, 27, to only get Bridgewater down to 24. And obviously, depending on how this plays out, you know, it favors one town over the other. But these are all numbers that are what we know now, so we will continue to look at this. But using those first grade numbers, assuming that the same number will come into kindergarten and first grade, we would be looking at similar numbers in kindergarten as well, 26.8, 24.5. And again, those could significantly change from now even to the end of the year to next year. Obviously, you know, class size, and I know the committee is committed to that, these are not numbers that anybody would, you know, would be or shouldn't be satisfied with, but these could be our realities if an override doesn't pass. And we're hoping that, again, we see additional savings in other areas such as insurance, potentially negotiations, potentially, you know, the additional E and D, increasing fees. This will obviously minimize the impact that it has directly on the customer. This is where we're at right now. I haven't taken any questions. And again, I know this is somewhat redundant for a lot of you, you've heard this before, but I thought as I shared with the staff today, I remember them, it's redundant for them as well, for some, but it's good to give the picture from the beginning again.
This is really disheartening to hear this, having kids in high school, this is very disheartening to hear. My question is, because there's a lot here, and the community needs to hear this.
Yes, we are going to be putting this information.
Yes, my question is, how is this information going to get promoted?
So what we've tried to do, obviously, as you know, we've created a tab on our website. And we have been working to take a lot of that information and try to create what we refer to as infographics. Information that's easy to understand, so it's not a lot of words you have to read. Obviously, we want to have our Q and As, and we do need to update the FAQ, I'm sorry, the FAQ's. We do need to update some of those with recent information, but we know there's a lot to read there and a lot to follow. So how can we get this information in, you know, the infographic, the one-pager, visually appealing and easy to understand? And so that's what we're working on now to then be able to get that out to the public and post to our website.
Do you have any ideas when you're thinking about that?
I don't, as soon as possible, we are working on it, so I can tell you as soon as possible.
Anything else, Ms. Conrad, or Rebecca?
No.
Does anyone have some questions for Mr. Powers? Anything?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got totally unrelated.
Sure.
And then maybe a little. I was just curious, again, where, I mean, I know we're trying to shuffle positions right now, or potentially, we're shuffling positions. But one question I do have is, again, positions that we need to fill that are vacant, is the Director of Student Services and the Principal RMS, and what has happened with those positions?
Yes, I haven't answered that. Okay, sure. Yes, so we obviously have conducted searches of both of those positions. We have a finalist that we are currently in negotiations with for the RMS principal position. We did have a search committee made up of RMS staff, RMS parents, RMS faculty, and central office staff that yielded really two strong finalists, and we have entered into negotiations in front of them. Confident we should have that wrapped up very soon and be able to announce to the community who our finalist is and who our principal going forward is. As far as the Director of Student Services, we did end up having to repost that position. Again, I think I shared with the committee, I apologize if I didn't or if I'm being redundant. We did have an initial search, we had, again, a meeting made up of parents, staff from student services across the district at various levels, and central office administration, and building-based administration. We did have a number of finalists that were recommended for an additional round of interviews. Those were conducted. We were cautiously optimistic that we had a potential finalist that we wanted to move forward with. That individual decided to remain in their district. Looking at the other two finalists, both strong candidates, they're going to be, you know, great directors of student services at some point in the near future. It just didn't seem as though it was a perfect match for us, and I felt as though that we really needed to find that perfect match. So that being the case, we have reposted it. We actually have another round of interviews tomorrow. We did have a few more applicants come in, so we will have another round of interviews tomorrow. Speaking with Mr. Leonard, he is, again, fully committed to us. Obviously, his initial commitment was just through the end of the school year. We have had conversations about what that may look like if we were not able to secure a Director of Student Services, and would he be willing to stay on and for how long? And it does, it seems as though that we do have a solid backup plan.
Thank you. Thank you. Budget Subcommittee report, Mrs. King.
Thank you. On April 7th, 2025, the Budget Subcommittee met at 5:00 PM at the Superintendent's Conference Room. In attendance were Mr. Fitzgibbons, Mrs. Davenport, Mr. Loesch, Superintendent Powers, Assistant Superintendent Barry, Ms. Verfuschon, District Treasurer, Mr. Chaka, Director of Facilities, Ms. Argenti, Fiscal Assistant to Business Services, Ms. Dorbitz, who took our minutes, and myself. As Ms. Davenport was working late work, we did take a few items out of order by motion. We did approve the March 24th, 2025 Budget Subcommittee minutes at that time. We did, as Mr. Powers indicated, review fees within the district based on the budget scenarios, as well as the fiscal year 2025 and 2026 budgets. Mr. Regarding Facilities, Ms. Chaka shared that he has started reviewing our current fee schedule for facilities, as well as researching other districts' fees. He would like to streamline, itemize, and update our current fee schedule to ensure that we are charging enough and the fees are clear and itemized. I believe the last time we have updated those are 2019, so we want to bring those up to the present. After presentation and discussion, he will prepare and present an updated fee schedule to be presented at the next Budget Subcommittee meeting. No action was taken at that time. Also regarding the fee schedule for 2025, 2026, we reviewed those. We did look at athletic fees, club, extracurricular, parking fees, and Excel program fees, which we discussed. Mr. Powers is going to prepare further information regarding cost for each to make them sustainable for next year, specifically regarding athletic and club fees, which we will discuss at that next Budget Subcommittee meeting. As parking fees were increased last year, those were terminated at the same price. Mr. Powers will also prepare information regarding the Excel program fees and expenses to be reviewed at that time. No action was taken at that time. Fiscal year 2025 budget discussion. Ms. Docalola gave a Budget Subcommittee quarterly report, which was included in the consent agenda for your review. Regarding fiscal year 2026 budget discussion, as Mr. Powers indicated, he also gave us an update as to the status of the business office in preparation for the budget by preparing different scenarios regarding if an override passes and if it does not, including ensuring that we are in compliance with special education, abided by current union contracts, reviewing class sizes and impacts of both budgets, and looking at retirements. He will remain working on the Budget FAQ documents on the district website. Additionally, he has been in contact with both towns via email, in-person meetings, and with the AdHoc Committee, that I believe Mrs. Davenport and I met with them. Further, I attended both the April 1st, 2025 Rainham Selectmen's Meeting and the April 8th Bridgewater Town Council Meeting. At both meetings, the town officials updated their boards on the current status of the budget we had sent to the towns and their current financial situations and potential override discussions, decisions, and timelines. The Rainham Board of Selectmen had agreed to direct their town administrator to draft a potential warrant article for the Rainham Town Meeting, which is scheduled for May 19th, 2025, at RMS at 7:00 PM. If that article passes at Town Meeting, the Rainham Board of Selectmen will then schedule a special town election for an override vote potentially in June. The Bridgewater Town Council, after a lengthy public comment and discussion on the budget and potential override, referred the matter to their Budget and Finance Committee and Finance Committee, which met this past Monday evening on April 14th. I was not able to attend that meeting, but I believe there was some discussion regarding that, and I believe they had further put it to their next Budget and Finance Committee and Finance Committee agenda, which I believe will be before their next Town Council Meeting on June 22nd, 2025. I believe is their intention, if that passes at that June 22nd meeting, they potentially also will put that for an override for a special election. Both towns are also still in discussions if they will do the potential special election on the same date or on different dates depending on their own schedules. So they're still trying to work that out as well. Our next Budget Subcommittee meeting is tentatively scheduled for Monday, May 12th, 2025, at 5:30, following the election of new school committee members on April 26th, 2025, and school committee reorganization on May 7th, 2025. And that concludes my report. All right, thank you, Mrs. King.
Mrs. King, I know some of the things that have come up over the past couple of years is the base program and the cost of base. And I'm just wondering if we, again, given if we do, if an override does not pass, are we considering canceling, getting rid of base, because it is costless money, we are paying for it? And not to say I want to cancel it, I was a parent that used, on the random side, part of her for as long as my kids could. But we should not be losing teachers to pay for base.
Yeah, as we've discussed, we've been talking about base from the past year, trying to make sure that it's not in the red. We have asked Ms. Argenti and the Business Office to bring us end-of-year reports after June to see where we end up with. So all of these fees will be on the table. If it's not self-sustaining, that'll be something that I can talk about, because, again, we can't continue a program that's cost and has money over time future, I understand. So, but that falls on our agenda to talk about this on our, once we've closed out, to see where we end up.
Any other questions, Ms. King? All right, we'll move on to new business. So first, we'll declare the last day of school. So I entertain a motion to approve Tuesday, June 10th, 2025, as the last day of school for PK and kindergarten students, and Wednesday, June 18th, 2025, as the last day of school for grades. June 18th, 2025, as the last day of school for grades 1 through 12. Do I have a motion?
So we'll.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unopposed, I mean opposed? All right, motion passes. Note that June 18th is a happy day of school. And now on to other business that came before the school committee after the agenda posted. So the consideration of the letter of the town from Rainham, and per request, I will read that letter aloud. This was sent to Mr. Fitzgibbons, our Chair, on April 8th. So, "Dear Chairman Fitzgibbons and Committee Members, in spirit of mutual respect and with the desire to work together as a united front with your committee and with our town partner, we respectfully request that you vote at your April 16th meeting to confirm that your committee will accept the decision of voters and honor the results, whatever they may be, of a Proposition 2 and a half override vote, if such a vote is taken to support the school committee's fiscal year 2026 budget. As part of that vote, we ask that you also confirm that in the event of a special election override vote does not succeed, you will not take the option of calling for a joint town meeting for the district, but rather take that option off the table as a possibility now. Please know that we make this request not lightly, not lightly, but rather out of deep concern at such a scenario whereby a joint town meeting could conceivably undermine the decision of the voters, would have devastating effects on both of our communities by forcing them to come up with the funds, either by decimating reserves that are needed for other obligations and critical needs, and/or by causing widespread layoffs, including our essential public safety providers, our police and firefighters, as well as possibly by curtailing services to our citizens. We believe that it is critically important that our committee take this action, and in doing so, a clear and important signal that our school district and our towns are united and are working together for the benefit of our schools and the children and young adults who attend them, but also for the benefit of our communities and all of our residents. We thank you for your consideration of this request, Rainham Board of Selectmen, Joseph Achico Chair, Patricia Riley Vice Chair, and Kenneth Collins Club." All right, so at this time, I would like to entertain approval of the following resolution. Resolution, "We, the Bridgewater Rainham Regional School Committee, hereby resolve on April 16th, 2025, to accept the will of the voters on a Proposition 2 and a half override for support of the fiscal year 26 budget and remove the option of a joint town meeting to force funding to a special election override not succeed. So I have a motion."
Mrs. Davenport, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Are we motion to accept this or motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss, right.
And, and my question too is, okay, let's just do it right now till we get to the discussion.
Was that a motion?
Motion to discuss. I'll make a motion to discuss, discuss the option.
Yes. A second, I'll say. All in favor? Or do I need an all in favor for that? Aye. All right. Did you want to discuss?
Yeah, one is, I just, I have, one, to, for us to accept the resolution, we need five guesses? Of what's here or of the committee?
Of who's here. That's a resolution.
Okay, so we need of who's here. And I guess my question is, and maybe Mrs. King you know, or someone else hears, I'm just trying to understand the process. That would be helpful for me to understand this process and what this means and doesn't mean.
Regarding the joint town meeting?
Yes.
So, may I?
Yes.
If the override does not pass, it's the voter, so if it goes to Town Meeting, a Bridgewater Council, and it fails, it fails there. If it passes and it goes to the special election, but then fails there, at the vote by the town people of Rainham and Bridgewater, we do have within our ability to call, as a school district, a joint town meeting of Bridgewater and Rainham. And at that time, we can, just as Rainham are the town meeting, we can call a joint town meeting by the school district. If it's approved at that joint town meeting, that would mean they would have to then come up with the files of their operational budgets.
And could at that joint meeting, just, I'm trying to understand the process, is at that joint town meeting, so let's say hypothetically, the override is, I don't know, $10 million, I've got it in my head, but at that joint town meeting, could they then put on the table that it's more than level funded but not quite what was in the override, or does it, what, what, like, I'm trying to understand that.
I don't know exactly what we can propose at the town, at the joint town meeting, but I think we can propose any budget that we want.
So it could be an immediate?
At that point, school committee, if the override fails, the school committee then have to recapitulate their budget and present a new budget going forward, if they sort of choose to present a new budget going forward and not the same budget. So, you know, again, thinking that, we talked about the 112, the possibility to avoid the 112, we obviously want to, as a committee, revisit a budget that potentially, or that already failed, didn't pass, and then at that point, back to the town.
So to even get the level funded, we even need to go a joint town meeting to get that level funded budget?
Yes. Because within Bridgewater and Rainham's town budgets, they're only half within their budget within the shape of, so a 3% from Rainham and a 4.67 for Bridgewater. That's what they have built into their operational budget for next year. So anything over and above that will be an override vote.
So I guess what I'm trying to understand is, why would we, why would we even consider this?
If we want to. Sorry, Mr. Loesch.
Mr. Loesch. Right, I, I really don't understand why we could do this today. I have no idea why. There's, there's nothing that says we couldn't take the vote as it was either, and we'd have to do, do whatever we have to, that would come up with something really. So I don't know what the motivation is today, other than to relieve a small group of people from making difficult decisions later on if we call the joint meeting. That's exactly what this is.
I think it was, I don't know.
No, go ahead, I'm just trying to understand the process right now.
So whatever, like, from my prop, like, what I took from the joint meeting is that we're, that we would undermine the voters. Like, if the voters made a stand at the ballot box and they did not want the override, this is undermining their vote. Like, going now, almost like, because if, if it goes to the town meeting, not everybody has to go, so then if it does get passed by everybody who wanted the override, now we're gonna possibly deplete our other, our other.
I appreciate that, Mrs. Davenport, I guess my question is, if, if we need even a level funded budget, how do we get that without going to a joint town meeting?
I don't think we needed to go to a joint town meeting for that. I thought that we just proposed the budget of the money that they said they can afford.
That's not going to be left.
That would be our $6.4 million.
Right, so, oh, so like.
So with that, does that, does that level funded budget have to go to a joint town meeting?
We would need to get an override.
Putting aside a joint town meeting, if the override fails, we still have to come back as a school committee and start by a budget. The likely budget that they will be able to fund is their 3 and 4.67. Anything over and above that, we would have to force a joint town meeting, which is still a $6.4 million. Pay override.
So, and the level funded isn't the 3 and the whatever, right? So it would be even more, that would be even less, that would be even more teachers if we said, if we did the 3 and the 4.6 or whatever it is?
Correct. Not just the 24 that they lost last year, but an additional 40.
It would be the cuts that I just reviewed with everybody, even though we would put forward a level service and budget, the town said they could only afford $96 million, we would be $6.4 million.
Mrs. King? I think really the spirit of this letter is for the selectmen of Rainham to feel confident that if they're going to support this, that they know that we're also going to be on board and support with the voters, and not then say, "Well, thanks for doing that vote that we asked you to do, but we're still going to go forward and try again." So I don't think it's me spirited, I think it's more of, they want to know that we're also on board with them, and that we're going to respect the voters, what we have to focus.
And with all due respect, I disagree. I don't think it's necessary at this time, they haven't even put it for a special election yet, and we're already anticipating to, you know, we're going to relieve you having to make difficult decisions later on. And as we just said, we're not even at a level service budget, which means we're going to have more positions. And frankly, I, I can't sit here in this seat in good faith saying that I'm advocating for the students of this district to agree to something like this, when it hasn't even been approved yet. It really looks like we're just trying to avoid going down this road, and it's a reality.
Mrs. King, Mrs. Davenport, I, I would almost, and I don't, I, maybe, I, I would make a motion to withdraw the motion, and I would motion to, is that the right way to do this, to table this?
We can table it, I mean, this is why it was put as a resolution and not a vote. Can we table it, Judy, is that a motion? Okay, motion to table, second.
Second.
All in favor? All right, any opposed? Any discussion? Sorry, I think you're right. Any discussion?
No, I just think that it's not the right time to do this. I mean, I think we can come back to this, especially if we're missing three members. And I, I don't think this is the time to do this right now. It is, as Mr. Loesch said, this is putting the cart before the horse. It's a very, it's premature at this point, and I understand where random selectmen are coming from, I do, and I appreciate that, but definitely need to first get into a town meeting first before we even do this.
Any other discussion? So, do I have a motion to table it? Is this, can we just do that? Okay, sorry, I'm sorry, you guys are just going to sleep. All in, all does in favor of tabling it?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, public comment. I will open the floor to public comment for a period of 12 minutes. Please keep comments to no more than three minutes.
Obviously, I'm disappointed that that even got kicked down the road, because, I'm sorry, Ashley Mallard, 370 range. What is happening is that Rainham is saying, "Only let the schools take the cuts." Let's be clear. That's what the request is. Don't come back and ask us for more. When have the fire, when have the police, when have, when have any of the other services taken cuts? No one has answered to me yet, and I've asked the town in Bridgewater as well, and I don't want them to take the cut. I'm the one up there advocating for the override. Do not undermine the ability for level services. You can go back, you can make a different budget, and you can tell the towns to dip into their pockets somewhere else, somewhere else. They feel uncomfortable, I understand to the Chair that you want to respect the vote of the people, but it's your job as a school committee to protect the children. It's not your job to defend a taxpayer in the town. It's your job to put forth, look at what is written on the school committee's website, and read what your job is as a school committee member. It is to protect the children. 50 kids in a classroom in here, that's not protecting the seniors. Telling them that before they go to college, we won't even have classes for them when they're applying, that's not protecting the children. That's your obligation.
Any last?
Dave Patrick, Vice President, PR. I'm not sure if we're aware, but the district was in a similar situation. I might have put you wrong, but it was early 2000s, and the process, the budget process, this process which is granted to voters by state law, all right? What they're asking you to do is to say, "Hey, we're not going to allow, you know, the law to take place," all right? But this process did take place, and this is how the budget was finally approved, was at a meeting of this type. And it was, I believe, successful, all right? The process is, if the budget is not approved, which is, that's presented now to the towns, that is going to need an override, then the school committee can go and adjust the budget for a town meeting, a joint town meeting, all right? I don't see how that is, you know, not letting the voters decide on the school budget. Just, I, I see just the opposite. By eliminating their right to vote for the budget and having it go right to the state, when that goes, the level funded budget is for, is based on this year's budget, not the one that's being presented for next year. So, look, you really need to consider, look, I think you should reconsider this and vote no, because what you're, what they're trying to do is take the rights away from the voters, you know, and that's clear.
Patricia Riley, Member of the Board of Select, and I apologize for coming up here again, but I just have to respond, and please know, it is the lifelong resident of Rainham, graduate of the Bridgewater Rainham Schools, 12-year member of the school committee, I would never be part of proposing anything that was not right for our schools. This does not say, "Don't vote for the override," it's the opposite. It says, "If you want the override vote, go to the voters, make your case to the voters, let the voters support it." But you're talking about something that is going to affect all the taxpayers in Bridgewater and Rainham, and they deserve an opportunity to vote on that. There has never been a regional joint town meeting. When this came on once before, I believe it was approved in Rainham, it was not approved in Bridgewater, so Bridgewater went down to, back to a Bridgewater Town Meeting, it was a Bridgewater Town Meeting at this time, and they voted to take money from other departments. There were layoffs within the town, I believe the library hours were curtailed, they made cuts within their budget in order to meet what Rainham had proposed to come up with. So this is not intended, not being spirited in any sense, it is actually, send a message to the voters, and that decision has to be made by you at the ballot box, get the people out there to vote, don't try to do something that could possibly undermine the vote of the vote of the decision of the voters, that's all it's asking for. Thank you.
Julius Caparis, 47, Red Mill Road. I'm here because, as a taxpayer, as a parent of former Bridgewater Rainham Regional graduates, as a former school committee member, as someone that was on the PDC, which is the insurance group. Mr. Powers referenced that we missed the window to be part of the nearest to a purchasing group, that's pretty bothersome to me, because it may or may not have saved the taxpayer's money, so I guess I question, how do we prevent missing it again? And also, what is the contribution that the district pays versus the employees being the staff in all the communities? Because the last time I was on it was six, over six years ago, and I don't know if the percentages have changed, but we all know that insurance goes up, and expenses go up, and revenue does not, as we've all talked about repeatedly. I also get stuck behind a lot of school buses, so I wondered, I don't know where their transportation contract is, but is there any way to reduce the number of buses out there? That's another question. And as far as questions go, there's 37 physicians out there, but I don't even know still what 37 physicians are. So maybe 16 of them are the retired physicians, but what are the other retired physicians? What are their titles, what are their positions, how do they affect classroom sizes? The sustainability should happen before you present the budget, not after, because that's why we're here again, that's why Mr. Powers talked about kicking the can down the road. If it's done before, not after, maybe we wouldn't be here right now, maybe it would have been done three years ago, pre-COVID. You get money more than you normally get, you fill up the positions, and like I said, you're going to be paying unemployment when you lay them off. Where was the future thinking on that? Where was the future thinking on that? I'm sorry that I had to say this, I didn't want to say in public, but I'm losing sleep over this. It's just happening all around. I had dues of fees, my kids were in parish centers, my children were in portable classrooms, my kids were out of school and out early when there were no specials, unless what? They went to college, they graduated. I had a daughter out of district, she's mom's special ed, I understand special ed, I understand that we need to be in compliance, I understand we're also maybe being out of compliance in these legal fees, we need to fix that, we need to get them, we need to be in compliance so that we're not being, having parents knocking down your door. Who's taking care of that? All these questions need to be answered, whether it's online or through the people, but you have to understand, yes, small classes are important, but how do we get them? And I think it was a particular Monday night, there was someone that said, "Nobody asks for 0%." Well, there's some industries where you don't get asked, you get told you don't get a raise, because the money's not there. And we guessed a raise, there is money there, so we can't have everything, we can only spend what we have. Thank you.
Do any members have any announcements to share? Mrs. King? I just want to reiterate, the annual town election in Rainham and Bridgewater is April 26, which is that Saturday at the end of your voting session, so please make sure everyone gets out to vote. I don't know the hours at vote town, there are different hours for voting, but if you're not gonna be here that Saturday, please do an early ballot. So everybody, please vote. We do have some school, two school committee oppositions on the ballot. Thank you, anyone else?
Just a final, I would like to thank the committees, past and present, that I've worked with, the committee members, the teachers, the administrators. It's, it's a time-consuming job, many nights, also thank my family, for ditching them, but I, I took this job seriously, and I think anybody on the committee should take it seriously and show up.
Thank you, Ms. Martelli. We'll miss you next year.
Thank you. Oh, I'm not the one with... I hope to see you guys there. I have more time to volunteer now.
There you go. All right, and a couple of announcements I have here, is Greenwater Playhouse will be performing Hates Town Teen Edition on May 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, if you get your tickets. We wish TJ's were the best of luck at their competition right now in Houston, Texas. And the school committee reorganization meeting will be held the week after the election on May 7, 2025, in the Superintendent's Conference Room at 166 Mount Prospect Street. And our next school committee meeting will be held in the auditorium of RMS on May 21, 2025. That brings us to the close of the meeting, I'll take, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all right, adjourn. Thank you very much.